We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the December 18th, 2023 regular meeting of the North Ridgeville City District. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, in the glory of our religion, in the one nation, on the ground, in the beautiful, glorious, just strong.
Call Mr. Grigsby here. Mrs. McCarthy.
Here.
Mrs. Saxon.
Here.
Mrs. Tamira. Mr. Vaca. Okay, first order of business tonight. In the absence of Mr. Vaca and Mrs. Tamira, we are going to establish a temporary president for the remainder of the proceedings this evening. Any nominations?
Yes, if I can nominate Marcy Saxon.
Any other nominations? Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. We will proceed with the voting of pro temp presidents. Mr. Grigsby. Mrs. Saxon. Saxon, okay. Mrs. McCarthy.
Mrs. Saxon.
Mrs. Saxon.
Mrs. Saxon.
Okay, and Mrs. Tamira and Mr. Vaca are not here this evening. So I have Mrs. Saxon, who's elected the president pro temp for the Board of Education for this regular meeting on December 18th, 2023.
Yes.
Does it motion?
Move.
One more second. Second. Any discussion?
Thank you for doing this, Mr. Saxon. Absolutely.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby, yes. Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira. Mr. Vaca. Motion carries.
Thank you. Finalization of the agenda. Is there anything to add or delete to the agenda?
The agenda is finalized, presented.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the written summary of the regular and special minutes for the meetings on November 7th, 2023, and November 12th, 2023.
Move.
Moved by Mrs. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Grigsby. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby, yes. Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira. Mr. Vaca.
Thank you. We move into the superintendent's report.
Very good. But we are all gathered today for what is always the most exciting part of our presentation. And we're going to start with Mrs. Andrea Vance, who is going to recognize our ECLC Students of the Month. Mrs. Vance.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure of introducing two of the cutest Students of the Month this month. We're going to start with our first Student of the Month. We're going to start with Mary Masterson. Mary, can you just give the crowd a nice wave? Mary is in preschool and is in Miss Diabato's classroom. And Miss Diabato and Miss Tina said that Mary has been a wonderful example and a role model for all her students, for all the students. She is always willing to help her peers and help them feel better. Mary is always the first one to volunteer when the class is acting out social emotional scenarios. She is always willing to give an in-depth insight into how and why we should behave, respect, and empathize with each other. So, Mary, that's impressive. Mary is always trying her best as she completes her work. And her teachers both say that it's been a pleasure to have Mary in class. Miss Diabato and Miss Tina look forward to watching Mary grow. Congratulations, Mary. Our next Student of the Month is... You guys good? Okay. Our next Student of the Month is Ethan Stellulak. And Ethan is in Miss Rogers' class in kindergarten. Ethan, can you wait? Miss Rogers says that Ethan is Ranger Strong. He loves to help his peers in the classroom. He is a great teacher helper and always comes to school with a smile on his face. He is a great friend to Mrs. Brooks' Intensive Needs Classroom friends that come to visit. He is a positive role model to all. And we're so proud of Ethan and his work ethics and willingness to never give up. He has a great positive attitude. And I will say just really quickly that Ethan reminded me about three times and thanked me for being Student of the Month and coming tonight. Keep up the great work, Ethan. Miss Tepni from Liberty.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Mrs. Tepni. I'm the principal at Liberty. And tonight, we have two very special students as our second grade Students of the Month. Kylie and Dylan are twins. And they're both in two different second grade classrooms. And they were independently nominated by each of their teachers. It just coincidentally happened at the same time. So we thought that was really special for them to have this together this evening. So Dylan is in Mrs. Hunt's second grade classroom. And Mrs. Hunt's second grade class actually voted Dylan as the Student of the Month for December. She said Dylan sets a great example for others. He loves coming to school and is so helpful to his classmates and teachers. Some things that his classmates said about him were that he is kind and respectful, and he's a great friend to have. She says that she could not agree more. Ms. Tabar and I agree as well. We are very grateful for you, Dylan. Congratulations. Kylie is in Mrs. Byrne's second grade class. Kylie has been a fabulous role model in our classroom. She is always respectful and kind of her classmates as well as her teachers. During their lessons, she is one that her teacher can always count on to be participating and focused. We find her being a great helper, both to adults and students in our building. Keep up the great work, Kylie. We are very proud of you. Congratulations. Fourth class, Mr. Sullivan from NRAC.
Good evening. Welcome, families. We have four students from NRAC, so I will call each student individually. Our first student is third grader Ruby Nett. Here's what Ruby's teachers in three teal say about her. "We are happy to nominate Ruby for demonstrating service. We can always count on her to lend a helping hand in the classroom with any task we give her. She listens during lessons and participates often. Keep showing your Ranger Strong service." Those are some great words. Good show. Our next Student of the Month is George Kadamia. So here is what George's teachers in five yellow say about him. "George is friendly, hardworking, respectful, and thoughtful. He is always thinking about his teachers and peers and trying to find ways to make them happy. We love having George in five yellow." Congratulations. Our next Student of the Month is Shelby Lingle. Here's what Shelby's teachers in seven yellow say about her. "The seventh grade yellow studio has selected Shelby as a Student of the Month. Shelby has displayed many characteristics of Ranger Strong. She's a young lady who shows pride in her schoolwork. She has gone above and beyond our expectations on classroom assignments and assessments. Shelby is a definite asset in and out of the studio. Keep up the great work, Shelby, and continue to stay Ranger Strong." Congratulations. And our final Student of the Month is Austin Swinney. Here's what Austin's teachers say about him. "This school year, Austin has shown all strong attributes. He has worked very hard on the Ranger Brew Crew coffee cart, from taking orders, giving compliments to our customers, setting up restocking, and being responsible for all the money. Austin takes pride in his work, respects other students and adults, and helps whenever he can. We are so proud of Austin and all of his hard work in the classroom and with Ranger Brew Crew this school year. Congratulations."
Good evening. I'm Melissa Durkin, Principal of Ranger High Tech Academy. And today, I have the honor of nominating two of our Learners of the Month. The first Learner of the Month I have the honor of presenting is Zane Allen. Zane is a third grader at RHTA, and he was nominated by Coach Detmar, his math teacher. And Coach Detmar said, "Zane is always a helpful and active participant in all team-based problem-solving and math class. No matter what the challenge is, he doesn't give up and explains his thinking to his teammates. His active participation also helps his team be successful because he's good at thinking about and fixing mistakes." And that's a really good thing to be able to do. We are so lucky to have such a Ranger Strong member of our math. Congratulations. Now I'm going to call up our second Learner of the Month. Our second Learner of the Month is Kate Kaufman. Kate is a seventh grader. And she has been at RHTA for quite a while. She has demonstrated leadership her entire life at RHTA. She was nominated by Coach Wood, and this is what Coach Wood said about Kate. "Kate shows great respect to her fellow learners and coaches. She shows kindness and respect to others at all times. If I need a student to help with a task, Kate is the first hand up. She exhibits Ranger Strong character and leadership and is an example for her peers. And also, I wanted everyone to know that Kate is part of our seventh and eighth grade cheerleading squad in North Ridgeville, who came in third place at their state competition last week. And additionally, she volunteers and is always doing leadership roles around the school. So congratulations, Kate." You'll learn to present the high school Students of the Month.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. For the second month in a row, I wish you all happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope you have a peaceful, wonderful break and spend time with your family and loved ones. Same to you all. I have the pleasure of introducing a number of NRHS Students of the Month. They're all seniors, members of the class of 2024. And as you meet all of the various Students of the Month, understand that in our graduating class, we have approximately 370 seniors. And they are fantastic. And we just highlight some of that giant iceberg of wonderful seniors that this high school presents to the community for graduation each year. And if the Titanic got sunk by the tip of that iceberg, you know we have a powerful group. I'm going to start with one young man who couldn't be with us tonight because he is representing North Ridgeville High School as a member of our bowling team. As you can see on the screen, his name is Angel Vega. He was nominated by the staff and administration of our high school for a number of reasons. He's an outstanding student. He is an example of what it means to be Ranger Strong. He is a role model that other students follow, not because of his physical strength, but because of the strength of his character. Angel is the leader of the North Ridgeville High School Student Section for all of our athletic events. That means he communicates out the theme for the games. And he represents our student body by being right in the middle of the group at all home events. If we have special requests, for instance, a visiting student, I go to Angel and say, "Angel, take care of this person. You got it, Mr. Mueller." What I really love about Angel among all of his qualities, he is a member of our vocal music program. And as a member of the a cappella choir and our show choir, the Spectrum of Sound, his infectious enthusiasm just best represents the mood and the quality of the programs that occur in the high school and that we share with our greater community. He is just such a positive young man. His favorite class is his English 161 with Mr. Hody. Next year, Angel hopes to attend Baldwin Wallace University. And after college, he hopes to pursue a career as a crime scene investigator or an interrogator. We love Angel, and we're happy to recommend him as a Student of the Month for North Ridgeville High School. Our next Student of the Month is the young lady that you see standing next to me. This is Camilla Santana. She's here with her family. Where's Fam? Hi, guys. There they are. She was nominated by our staff and administration. She's also a fabulous example of being Ranger Strong. Camilla's one of our office aides. And our main office staff absolutely loves her. She's helpful to both students and teachers. She's a member of our drama club and prom committee. She has been performing in productions here at North Ridgeville City Schools since middle school. I have had the pleasure of seeing her as a lead in our fall play last year, Almost Maine. This year, she was a lead in Odd Couple Female Version. It wasn't Oscar Madison, but it was...
Olive Madison.
Olive Madison, the grumpy sportswriter and cynic. She can sell anything. She was also in the ensemble of our spring musical last year, Little Shop of Horrors. She is so mature, so dependable. When we have a new student or we have a student who is looking for someone to talk to, I can go to her and I say, "Camilla, can you talk to this person?" "No problem, Mr. Mueller." Never follows up. I have to follow up to her. "Oh, yeah, she's good. He's good." Whatever it may be. She is helpful. She is proud. She loves her life. She loves her family. She loves her school. And we are so proud to present Camilla Santana as our Student of the Month. All right, now let's flip the little curveball here. I've been waiting for this one for a number of reasons. And he's not on your program. But he's here this evening. I want to present Louis Tamura. And there was a little sense of urgency for me to get Louis on today because you may or may not know Louis's mother, Ms. Joanna Tamura, is a member of our Board of Education. Mr. Tamura will be formally leaving our board, and I definitely wanted to get Louis on the tab, on the agenda before she left. Sorry she couldn't be here, but Dad is here. There's Dad. So what picture? Did you get it up there for me?
Yes.
So when I got to North Ridgeville, you know, I asked people to do one thing, and that's to get better every day. Just G B E D. I use it every day, either by initials or phrase. And within three weeks, Louis had his own G Bed shirt printed and helped me spread G B E D to the students and the school district. And he knows that that is very special to me. Not because he's trying to get in good with the principal, but because Louis embodies G Bed every day. His teachers have said Louis is a joy to have in class. He's extremely intelligent, humorous, and personable. He's a part of many clubs, including the Leo Club. It's a Lions affiliate. Jazz Band, if you follow us at NRHS Principal, you can see him performing the jazz band for our school assembly this morning. Outstanding. He plays sax. And he's a member of the National Honor Society and Student Council. His favorite class is broadcast. Louis has been the voice and the face of our morning announcements at North Ridgeville High School, for sure, in my time here, even though he has stepped back and given some of his fellow journalism students the opportunity to develop their talent. They all go to Louis for the standard of performance. Listen to this. Louis hopes to attend Nashville University. And after college, Louis hopes to pursue a career in broadcasting. His dream is to call play-by-play for an NFL Super Bowl, maybe the Browns, or the NBA Finals. That ship sailed, but maybe it's coming back. And I hope he does it. But let me tell you about Louis. Louis can read you to small print off credit loan commercials that quick. He can enunciate and read faster than anything. And you can understand him. That's the crazy part. But he's such a great kid. This year, he has backed off a little bit and just become a regular kid. He's like out and about. He's a little slippery. I gotta watch him. And I'm happy about that. I am totally happy about that because that's part of life. And I'm so proud of Louis Tamura. And it is my pleasure to announce him as Student of the Month for North Ridgeville High School. At this time, we need all Students of the Month to come up and stand here and get a group picture.
You can come over here.
Sure.
This will also be posted on the website. So if you guys don't get a picture, it will be found there.
Do you want me to position this?
I think we're... All right, ready? One, two, three. All right, one more. One, two, three. Congratulations, Kate. Okay, so while Karen Sir, you can hear us, okay? I am Marie Marie. So I wish you all a very happy holiday. Congratulations again to all of our students. Annie House, Settler, Tom, Joe, Spatter, staff members of the...
Good evening, everybody, and congratulations to our Students of the Month. It is my pleasure, and on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to congratulate two staff members for their selection as our NRCS December Staff Members of the Month. Each month, the Board of Education recognizes staff members who have shown extreme care, demonstrated excellence, and/or provided exemplary professionalism. These nominations come from students, parents, colleagues, and administration. This month's first award winner is Ms. Monzerat Taylor. Mo, as we better know her as here in North Ridgeville, was first hired as a substitute in the food service department in 2006 and became a full-time employee with us in 2007, where she has worked in food service ever since. One of Mo's colleagues had this to say about her. "Mo is so hardworking, always ready to lend a hand, and has a great attitude and work ethic." Mo's supervisor shared this. "Mo is so kind-hearted with every student and staff she interacts with. She will go above and beyond for any task given to her." Congratulations, Mo, and thank you for all you do for your students at North Ridgeville. Our second employee this evening is Ms. Carrie Barbrick. Carrie is a kindergarten teacher at ECLC. Ms. Barbrick was hired for that same position in 2014. In her time with NRCS, she has served on the building leadership and district leadership teams. One of Carrie's colleagues had this to share about her. "Carrie works so hard every day to provide for all of her students. Carrie attends countless meetings with her intervention specialists, career professionals, colleagues, and principal to ensure the success of her students. She excels at parent communication and reaching out to those who are important and impactful in her students' lives. Carrie's heart and soul goes into her teaching alongside of her willingness to care for her own family. Carrie is a rock star in the classroom, and it shows immensely in the relationships that she has built with our students." A parent shared this about Carrie. "Mrs. Barbrick creates an amazingly inclusive environment for learners with a variety of need and makes all students feel comfortable and celebrated in her classroom." Congratulations, Carrie, and thank you for the care you show to our students, families, and your colleagues. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank all of our parents and staff members who nominated staff members of the month. And we would encourage you to do so because your kind words are so important to share with all. I hope you have a wonderful holiday and a wonderful and restful break. And congratulations again to Ms. Taylor and Ms. Barbara. Thank you very much. And congratulations to all of our students and our staff members. We appreciate all that you do.
We're just going to continue on. We have two quick presentations and then our amazing building report coming from Liberty. But first, I'm going to ask Mr. Prit to share a little bit with the board about our calendar.
Thank you. Happy holidays, everyone. I would just like to start off by sharing that this will not be nearly as inspiring as what you just sat through. It's a great group of kids, a great group of staff. So we have entered that time of the year where we begin looking ahead to our calendars. And what I'm hopeful for is that this will be the first of a couple of calendar discussions we have over the next few months. We really want to get into place as a district to where we're really doing calendars two years out as opposed to doing six or eight months out. And I probably have the pieces, parts in place to allow us to start doing that. So what I have before you is the draft of the 24-25 school year calendar. I don't know how that got here so quickly. But that's the one we're looking at. So and what you'll find is that it's extremely similar to what we currently have in place this year. So if you remember last year when we had discussions, we had talked about some structural changes we were making to our school day and our school calendar. We basically extended the day by about 20 minutes, and we compressed or shortened our school year. This calendar follows that same process. So it's received good feedback from community. It's received... It's received good feedback from our staff. And we're looking to make those changes permanent, actually, as we move into the new year. So first day for students will be the 22nd of August. That puts it about where it is right now. So if you remember back to the beginning of this year, we were about a day or so earlier, but it was still that Thursday. What that allows us to do is to get kids in, how to get them into a routine, get them started, and then get into a weekend. We have found over the years that when we just start off with five-day weeks, they've become very long, very exhausting weeks for lots of people. So and then our pre-K and our K would show up on the Tuesday following, which is the 27th. And from there, we are off and running with 4,800 students. So as you look through, you'll see a similar setup to what we have this year. And what I want to point out are some of those days in green. There's one September 20th, one 25th October. We've got one in January. And those are professional development days. With all of the mandates and all of the requirements that we have from the state, finding time to make sure those are met requires us to be a little bit creative. So when our parents see those green dates on those calendars, know that in most cases, our staff are working on something, whether it's literacy work or something else, that's kind of the required thing. October 24th brings us to the end of our first quarter. Semester then ends on the 10th of January. So again, puts us in about the same spot. I believe this year, we are the 12th of January for the ending of the semester. We'll look to end the third quarter on the 14th. And what you'll find is that this year's current 23-24 calendar is kind of the perfect calendar. We had an extra day with Leap Day and things of that nature. Obviously, we don't have that same setup here. So when we start looking at the end of our school year, we're scheduled on the 29th of May for students being their last day. It would be wonderful to get out before the holiday, but in order to do that under this calendar, there are some other trade-offs that you have to make. So the calendar itself has worked through with a committee, myself, Mrs. House Stettler, Dr. Miller, and then representatives from both of our union groups as we put these together. So we worked through several different drafts of, you know, if you move a day here, or this day becomes a professional development day, what does that do with your end of the school year? And we recognize that there is no perfect calendar. We know that a calendar that works for one family that, you know, wants their students out early so they can start with sports practices and games in early June or vacation doesn't work for that family who'd like us to start in September because they take a late vacation and things of that nature. So I think we have done a pretty good job of providing a schedule that puts a number of quality instructional days before some of those days where we ask our students to test, whether that's state's test, whether it's AP testing or whatever that case happens to be, yet still giving them the time that they need to decompress, to, you know, have a long weekend here or there. So I think if the pandemic has taught us anything, it's that we can look at structure and do things differently so that we're not burning out students or staff, which I think we were probably guilty of in the past when we just got into a school year of ran, ran, ran. This will be the calendar that we would recommend for 24-25. I would expect that come, well, probably February, you'll see a 25-26 calendar. And then our goal would be this time next year to talk about the 26-27 calendar. And not long after that, if all goes well, we'll start talking about what we do with a new building coming online. So we're not done bar-hauling. So do you have any questions about what's presented in front of you? I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to ask Dr. Miller to join us to give us some exciting updates about our fall third grade.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wanted to start by saying happy holidays, and I hope you get some time to relax over the next few days here. I also wanted to point out that this is only one slide today, so don't get used to that. You'll probably never see a one-slide presentation again. But we did want to share some exciting news. So we got our third grade fall scores back recently. This is the state test that all of our students take in the fall from year to year. And you'll notice there that we did a comparison over the past several years, and we are doing really well comparatively speaking. We know we still have some work to do, obviously. But if you look back to 2019, which would have been the 1920 school year, and if you remember that spring, we were released for COVID. But in the fall, our students took the test as normal. So really, in 2019, that was the last semi-normal, if you will, year before COVID hit. And you can see as a district, we had 44% of our students pass this test in the fall. And again, this is a test that our students are supposed to be able to pass by the end of the school year. So it's an accomplishment for any student to be able to meet that proficient mark in the fall of their third grade year as it stands. And then you can see there that the state average on the far right was 44% at that time. So that's kind of like our baseline. And then if you look through the years, obviously during 2020, that was our hybrid year, which was very challenging for some students. We also didn't have the same number of students participate as we would in a normal school year. We saw a slight increase again in 2021, 2022, and we've talked about that year. We know that the students in that specific class, our fourth graders, really took a hit because of COVID, because they were in kindergarten when they let out, and then they went first grade, which is that pivotal year of learning how to read. And so we're still seeing some of those deficits, and we're still working with that class. But the exciting news is that our current class of third graders, we're now starting to see all the benefits of everything we've been doing in K2 for early literacy, and we are up to a 52% in the fall, which is quite higher than we were pre-COVID. So again, we know that we need to get closer to that 80% mark by the end of the school year, but with a 52 in the fall, we're very confident that we are making some strides in that direction.
Great news.
Fantastic. Any questions?
No, congratulations to everyone involved in making that happen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Final presentation tonight, I would like to call Ms. Amanda Zeppe-Techney, who is going to share a little bit with the board about the great things happening at Liberty. Amanda.
Hello again.
Hi.
Ms. Tabor is also here this evening, so we are excited to share with you some of the things that are happening at Liberty. So I have kind of outlined, we have four building goals for Liberty this year, and we'll just talk through some of the steps that we're taking to work towards those things.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, we're good. So our first goal is focusing on improving student achievement through the development of our teacher-based teams. And those teacher-based teams focus on collaborative planning, data analysis, and intervention. So in our TBTs, we look at a lot of different data. One of the more important data points that we look at, especially this year as we have the introduction of the new dyslexia law, is our AIMS Web data. And so this is a benchmark that students take three times per year. They take it in the fall, the winter, and the spring. In our first grade data, one of the things that's important to kind of be cognizant of as we're interpreting this data is that every fall, we see the same trends. We see a lot of students testing into the red, which is letting us know that they're performing below grade level. However, when we look at this measure, this is, the composite is really looking at oral reading fluency, how many words students can read accurately in one minute. And our first graders coming in in August, many of them are not really reading fluently yet, and they're still working on those foundational skills. So this is a trend we see, not just at Liberty, but across the country in first grade data. When students come in and they test in the fall, there's a lot of students in the red. What we want to look at, and I have put the last couple of years of our historical data on here, is that we see by the time we hit the winter benchmark, that greatly reduces. We have a lot of students moving into the green. So when we look at this data in the fall, we do look at the specific sub-tests on here, such as nonsense word fluency, to determine what students would need, would meet the qualifications for title services. So this is one of the measures that we're using to make those decisions, and those students are receiving interventions right now. This year, because of the dyslexia law, we are also progress monitoring any students that fell in the 25th percentile or below biweekly so that we can make sure that the interventions are appropriate. We are monitoring their growth every two weeks. We're looking at their scores to see if they're improving. We also look at our subgroups of data when we are pulling our benchmarks. So we look at students that are receiving English language services, special education services. We also looked at students that had half-day kindergarten, and one of the things that stood out to us was that 60% of our students that were in half-day kindergarten last year are requiring tier-three supports this year. So we are seeing that the full day does make a difference. Our second grade data looks a little bit better. So students are coming into second grade already reading pretty fluently. So we do see in the fall definitely more of the green. But again, we're looking at that data to pull any students that do need title services. So any students that fell into the red, and some of our students in yellow, are receiving title services based on this assessment data. Again, any students that fell below the 25th percentile are receiving progress monitoring biweekly. When we come back in January, January 16th, we'll start the winter benchmark. And so we will then have the comparison data so we can see how students grew from the fall to the winter benchmark. The winter benchmark will also serve as our dyslexia measure, which I'll talk about in a little bit as well. The other part of our TBTs, aside from looking at data, is curriculum development and standards, and, I'm sorry, assessment development. So a lot of the work that we've been doing is around unpacking our standards, creating learning progressions, learning intentions, and then developing common assessments to those standards. So our first and second grade team, but especially our second grade team, has spent a lot of time looking at the third grade OST release items, the test specs, and the blueprints for third grade. And we've started developing common assessments aligned to the standards. So this is just a snapshot of one of our second grade assessments. And you'll see on it, it has the learning intention listed with each question as well as the standard. So these common assessments are being given across every classroom. And it gives our teachers a clear picture for how students are performing on every single standard so that we can see how much more time we need to spend on specific standards or which students need more support on specific standards. Our second building goal is supporting and implementing our literacy initiative and supporting the new dyslexia law, which affects grades K through 4 this year. So we have a number of things in place to support that. The first is that through the Reaching All Students Grant, we have a K-2 literacy coach. Linda Reiner is our literacy coach this year, and she's been really wonderful to have in our building. She's provided a lot of support around data analysis, especially around the data collection and analysis for our students that are being progress monitored biweekly. She's working with a lot of our staff that have ELAL students in their classrooms to provide support and support to teachers and supporting students. And then she's working with a group of our second grade teachers around vocabulary instruction as well. So it's been really great to see our staff embrace that role and seek out her support in our building. For professional development, we do have a staff developer, Jeffy Mathis. She's from Mossflower, and she visited Liberty and ECLC last week. And she modeled, the focus was on individual writing conferences. So at Liberty, she visited eight different classrooms while she was there, and we had three substitutes that rotated so that every single teacher in our building was able to observe her modeling these writing conferences. And then all of our teachers, and myself included, had an opportunity to practice the writing conferences with students with her there in the classroom, and we were able to answer, ask her questions while she was with us. And so the feedback from that, from our staff, has been very positive. They had a lot of takeaways, things that they could really implement the next day in their classroom. She's coming back in February, and at that point, the focus will build to small group writing instruction. So kind of based on conferences, how are you using that data to send full students into small group to provide targeted instruction? So those are our next steps with her. We're very excited about that work. As I mentioned, we're progress monitoring students in the bottom 25th percentile on AIMS Web. So when we're progress monitoring those students, if their score is below the 25th percentile, basically what that's telling us is they're not reading very many words per minute accurately, but it doesn't really tell us why. And so we're using the decoding assessment, which is from the units of study, our curriculum, to really drill into the specific phonics skills that students are, have deficits in so that we can provide instruction on those specific skills. So at the top of the screen, I know it's hard to see from far away, but our teachers have developed a chart. So on the left side, we have the most basic phonics skills, CVC words, and it builds all the way to the right side where we have three-syllable words. And then finally, the last column is that they've mastered those basic phonics skills. So our teachers are tracking student progress on this throughout the year so we can see how students are growing through those foundational skills. We also have before-school tutoring. We have five staff members that are providing reading intervention tutoring in the morning. We currently have 18 students that are receiving tutoring, and then our hope is that from that winter benchmark data, we will identify additional students that would benefit from before-school tutoring. Our next building goal is focused on PBIS, continuing to build upon our positive behavior intervention and supports through the lens of Ranger Strong. Two years ago, Liberty applied for and was awarded Bronze, which is a Tier 1 implementation, so it's school-wide expectations. It's having the majorcies for all the different areas of how students are expected to behave throughout the school. It's looking at school-wide rewards and support. Last year, we applied for and we were awarded Silver, which is Tier 2 implementation. So it's providing supports that are more targeted for students that need a little bit more than just that Tier 1 implementation. So last year, we had groups such as our counselor, Mr. Kennedy, did a Ranger Strong group. We had a couple of different lunch bunches that focused on different social skills we noticed students needed to develop. We had a coping cat group for students that were experiencing anxiety. And then this year, our motto has been Go for the Golds. So we are planning to apply for Gold this year, which is Tier 3 implementation. And that involves more intensive, individualized interventions for our students that need the most support in our building. So to support that work, every time our PBIS committee meets, which is monthly, we are meeting in three different subcommittees. So we actually just had our meeting this morning. We have one subcommittee that focuses on Tier 1, so continuing to improve our school-wide implementation of PBIS. We have another subcommittee that focuses on Tier 2 and Tier 3. So that subcommittee is working on developing strategies for small groups and individual students that need a lot of support, but also documenting the effectiveness of those interventions, which is a big part of applying for PBIS. And then we also have a Culture and Climate Committee that focuses on making adjustments to our culture and climate for both, you know, students, staff, and families. And they're working on a lot of home-to-school connections as well so that the, like, character strong traits that we have, we're making monthly activities that students can take home and do with their families. We also have a new Ranger Strong cards. So last year and the year prior, students earned tickets that were raffled for prizes. But we found that it wasn't really rewarding enough students, and it wasn't frequent enough. So this year, we moved to a sticker chart. There's a little picture of it on there. Students earn stickers for being Ranger Strong. And then when their chart is full, they can either redeem it for a prize or they can save up for a larger prize. So we have a cart of smaller prizes that start at 20 stickers. We have larger prizes that are 40, 60, 80, and 100 stickers. And I have a little video of students talking about what their favorite prizes are.
Thing about the card is you'll get cool prizes.
I like about the PBIS card is the pencil to get the mechanical pencils.
I like from the PBIS card, this slime.
You save up for 100 stickers, you get to, you get to be in Mr. Kennedy's chair all day.
I like to buy Mr. Kennedy for the whole class.
So it's just a couple of students sharing. This slime is really popular. Mr. Kennedy's chair is a 100-sticker prize. The kids are really into it. It's like decorated, they get pushed around in the chair the whole day. That's like a really big prize for them. And then Dylan, our Student of the Month, he really likes the whole class prizes. So he bought, like, PJ Dave for his whole class. Yeah, it's, the kids get to work together. It can be collaborative too, they can pull some of their tickets.
So Mr. Kennedy's chair is a rolling chair that the students get in their classroom and...
Yeah, they get to sit wherever they go. If they have, like, speed, we push it down for them. We have some new recess and lunch rewards as well. Because those times were more hectic, we were seeing more discipline issues in those places. We wanted to put more positive things in place to motivate students to follow the expectation. So the top-left corner is fancy lunch. So once a month, our monitors choose one class per lunch period, and they get, like, table class on their table. We have, like, little vases with artificial flowers. We have little Allee de candles, the kids really love it, they're cute. We also do tickets for lunch and recess, and we do do drawings for those where kids can earn lunch with the principals and the counselor. That's one of the pictures on the bottom. And for recess, if their ticket is pulled on a day where their class would normally be on the blacktop, they get to pick a friend and go to the playground for an extra day. So that's motivating for them as well. And then Ms. Tabor and I do positive principal phone calls. So their teachers nominate them, and then they get, like, a little certificate that they take home, and we bring them down to call their parents with us. The kids are usually very excited with the parents. They're really touched by those calls. It makes, it's good to spread that positive news as well. And then our last building goal is creating an environment where people feel represented, valued, heard, and respected. And so there's a lot of things we try to do in our building to have a positive climate and a positive culture. One is our PBIS committee has that subcommittee, which focuses not just on the culture of our staff, but on our students and our families, and having the communication with our families in terms of PBIS. Ms. Tabor does our monthly staff bulletin boards, and she is super creative. So we had one where it was like childhood pictures, you had to guess who it was. We had one where people had to share something they were thankful for about a different staff member. We have Sudoku up right now, so people work together collaboratively to solve that. We do shout-outs in our weekly bulletin, and sometimes those shout-outs come from us, but most often, they Um, we do shout-outs in our weekly bulletin, and sometimes those shout-outs come from us, but most often, they come from staff members shouting out each other. And then we have several school committees, um, our building leadership team, they really are the instructional and the cultural leaders in our building. And so district-wide, we've been doing some work around the book, um, School Culture Required. And so our building leadership team has, has been doing some work around that as well. Just different activities in the book that help us identify areas in our culture that we want to work on together. Um, we have a social committee that plans monthly outings for our staff, intimate potlucks. Um, today, we had our December potluck. It was a cookie exchange. Um, we have a site-based committee, which focuses on, um, any problems that come up. We work together to collaboratively solve them. We plan school-wide events and things like that. And then we revived the sunshine committee this year. So that has been, um, really nice to provide encouragement to people that need it or that are going through a difficult time, but also to honor and celebrate different milestones that our staff are experiencing as well. Um, so I know that's a lot of information, but I just want to thank you for allowing us to share some of the things that are happening at Liberty. Um, there really is a lot more that we could say about the wonderful things that are happening, but thank you for this opportunity. And if anybody has any questions, I would be very happy to try to answer them.
Just a lot of great ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think all the wonderful things are happening because of the wonderful leadership over at Liberty. So thank you.
Well, we're a great team.
Yes.
It's definitely, I could not be doing all of these things by myself. Um, so I know, like, the assistant principal position was a huge add for this year, um, but I hope that you can see what a difference it's making.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do think it is, uh, worth mentioning that her pal, Reeve Tabor, is getting married here shortly. So congratulations. As we're making milestones, we're really excited for you.
Congratulations.
And both of you are just honestly doing an outstanding job. We're grateful for all the things that you've put in place. But mainly, the care that you take of your staff and your students is impressive, and we are grateful. So thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes Super Kennedy for you.
Thank you very much. Well, now is the time for announcements and hearing of the public. So we have two announcements here. We have, um, our upcoming Board of Education organizational meeting, January third, twenty twenty four, at five thirty, and then we will move into our, um, regular meeting on the same day at five forty-five. So mark your calendar for that exciting fun. Um, are there any other announcements that we have tonight? I would just like to announce, um, that we, uh, miss, Mrs. Tamira this evening. She had a family emergency, and we, uh, regret she was not here for her last scheduled board meeting. But we know we'll see her around as our JBS representative, and we appreciate everything she has done for the board over the years. Um, okay, so we'll move into the hearing of the public. If there's anyone who would like to address the Board of Education, this is the time. Uh, it does not look like we have anyone here in attendance, so we will move on to our consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda resolution as presented.
Second.
But I, yes, I, I was just about to do that. Moved by myself, seconded by Mrs. McCarthy.
I thought Jeff.
Did Jeff?
Jeff.
Jeff, I apologize. Okay. All right. Moved by Mr. Grigsby, seconded by Mrs. McCarthy. Um, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as listed above. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grigsby, yes. Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira, Mr. Vaca.
On to the finance report. Mrs. McCarthy.
Thank you, Ms. Saxon. Um, we have a couple of items on the finance report this evening. The first item, we have a resolution to approve the financial statements and report of interest and investments for the month of November twenty twenty-three. I move to approve this item in one reading.
Moved by Mrs. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Grigsby. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira, Mr. Vaca.
Second, we have a recommendation that the Board of Education approve a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is a revised version of the annual resolution the board passed in April of this year. The revision includes the new village and collection amount for the remainder of the fiscal year due to the successful passage of the bond issue levy on November seventh, two thousand twenty-three. I move to approve this item in one reading.
Moved by Mrs. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Grigsby. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira, Mr. Vaca.
And lastly, we, um, have a resolution that the Board of Education approve the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Certificate of Project Completion. This has been a while coming. Ten years for taking now. Um, the resolution pertains to the financial reconciliation and final closeout of the two thousand thirteen building projects of the North Bridgeville Academic Center. I move to approve this item in one reading.
By Mrs. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Grigsby. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank, um, Mr. Pasini for his due diligence and, um, closing out this project after significant time.
It was joyous to read that. Let's roll call, please.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira.
We move now into other board business. Um, I am accepting nominations for the position of president pro tem for the January third, two thousand twenty-four organizational meeting. The office. Can we move into the election?
I'm probably going to close nominations.
I'm sorry. I will close nominations. Um, so I move to approve Kelly McCarthy as president pro tem for the January third, two thousand twenty-four organizational meeting. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Um, there's one second.
Oh, yeah. I'll second it. Well, done.
Yeah. Oh.
We're in letter B.
Well, we haven't done the election yet.
We skipped the letter B.
Didn't we just accept the, I thought we do the nomination, then we do the election separately? Okay. Okay. Um, then let's move to, back to A. Um, all right. So just voting for the office of President Pro Tem, Mr. Grigsby.
This is Kelly McCarthy.
And, um, Mrs. McCarthy.
Kelly McCarthy.
And I also vote for, um, Kelly McCarthy. McCarthy is elected as president pro tem of the Board of Education for the January third, two thousand twenty-four organizational meeting. Um, it is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Kelly McCarthy as president pro tem for January third, two thousand twenty-four organizational meeting. I will move that. Moved by myself, seconded by Mr. Grigsby. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy. Uh, Mrs. Tamira, Mr. Vaca.
Thank you. I'll offer your patience there.
That's a lot.
It's a lot. Um, yeah. Okay, so, uh, we'll now move into the human resources report. Uh, we have a few items to consider. We have one certified staff leave replacement contract, one certified building substitute contract, two support staff contracts, one non-nuclear supplemental contract, one unpaid volunteer recognition, one non-represented support staff adjustment, one certified staff resignation, four support staff resignations, and one non-represented support staff resignation. I move to approve the human resources items in one reading.
Second.
Moved by myself, seconded by Mrs. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira, Mr. Vaca.
It is recommended that the Board of Education adjourn this regular meeting. By Mr. Grigsby, seconded by Mrs. McCarthy. Is there any discussion?
Well done.
Thank you. Just wishing everyone a happy and healthy new year. We'll see you in, uh, twenty twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grigsby, yes. Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira, Mr. Vaca.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.